Tonight, the city council is meeting via electronic means specifically through Zoom. To prevent the spread of COVID-19, the Center for Disease Control strongly advises against meetings larger than 10 people. Due to the size of the city council, the meeting tonight is being conducted electronically. We welcome the members of the public who are observing and attending this meeting via the link provided in the agenda. Could we do the pledge of allegiance? Please.
I pledge allegiance, flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
All right, I'd like to call the work session, May 26, 2020. Do we have items for review and discussion? What do we have?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, the only item that we have on the work session for this evening is the March 2020 monthly financial report. Sheila Ernst and our Assistant City Manager and Finance Director is here to give that. Sheila?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to share my screen, and when I do, I won't be able to see if any of you have any questions. So if it's all right with you, I will go over the monthly financial report and then ask for questions when I'm all done. And so... Share screen. So what you are seeing right now is the March 31st, 2020 monthly financial report. So it's for the entire fiscal year that just ended on March 31st. And this, I kind of spent a lot of time today kind of typing out and putting some notes on this for all of you to be able to see so that I could show you some of the things that I'm going to talk about tonight. Because this is the end of year, I look at different things when I'm checking this financial report. And the first thing that we have here is this is the report of cash balances. And if you will recall, in our budget, every year, we estimate what the cash carryover of every fund will be at the end of the fiscal year because that is our beginning cash balance on the first day of the next fiscal year. And so what I have here is this is our actual general fund cash balance on March 31st, 2020. It ended up being $3,585,467. And what we had estimated that it would be is $2,552,116. And I want to show you where that number comes from. So this is the budget summary. It's the very first financial page that is in the budget book. And basically, every in this column here are the numbers of what we expect to start the year with in cash. And that is our cash carryover number. And so you can see that for the general fund, and I'm really going to focus on the general fund. And I usually always focus on the general fund. And the reason that I do is because the general fund is so important because general fund money can be used for any expenditure that the that the city has, no matter what it's for, as long as it's for a public purpose. So all of the other funds that are listed on this sheet are restricted, and they can only be used for specific purposes that are either set out in state statute or are restricted by the government itself. And so the general fund is super important because that's where our reserves lay and where we will draw money from if there is a if any of the other funds run out of money because of a natural disaster or some emergency that happens throughout the year. It's the general fund that we can pull money out of out of that reserve to be able to get us through sometimes when we're waiting for something like FEMA reimbursement or something or other revenues that we were counting on. But those general fund reserves are very important because they give us some money to make sure that we're going to be able to cash flow and have liquidity and be able to meet our expenses, even if we're waiting on revenue that has not come in for some reason or because we have to spend a lot of extra cash on expenditures that we weren't planning on because of an emergency. And so with the general fund, you can see we had more money. We ended the year with more money than we anticipated that we were going to by about $1 million. However, some of that money that is in this $3,585,000, some of that cash is sitting there because of capital purchases that we were planning on spending and paying for before March 31st. But what happened was while we had ordered those purchases, we didn't actually get the assets, the capital items, delivered before the end of the year. So there is actually money that is restricted and not available to use. And the amount is about $297,000. Of that $3.6 million is not available and free to spend however we want because we actually have already ordered items, and we're going to have to pay for them next year. And so we have to reserve that money to pay for those items when they get delivered. If you look at the next page, this is the report of unreserved fund balances. You can see that we ended our year on the cash basis, the unaudited number with a 28% fund balance. And that is compared to what we had projected in our adopted budget. We thought that we were going to have a 20.57% fund balance. So you can see that we ended the year 7.67% higher than we expected. And really, that was caused because we had fewer expenditures than we thought we were going to have. And I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on the next page. So in the general fund, what our actual revenues that we received during last fiscal year were $17 million. In our projection, in our budget, in the department estimate column, we projected that we would receive $17.1 million. So we had a difference of $63,875. That is four tenths of 1% difference. So that is a very, very close estimate. And all of our savings really came from our expenditures. So we actually ended up spending $16.9 million. Our budget, our department estimates in the budget estimated that we would spend almost $18 million. So we had a difference of about 6%, which also is very close in the grand scheme. I know $1 million, $1.1 million seems like a lot of money. It absolutely sounds like a lot of money to me. But when you look at the total expenditures of $16.9 million, six, within 6%, when we are doing projections six months before the end of the year, and we are trying to ensure that we have money for every single position if it gets filled and every single snowstorm and every single ice storm and anything that might possibly happen from, for the last six months of the year. I think this is a very close and good result of only having a difference of 6%. And I wanted to go into this a little bit more. So I basically took the 12 months ended March 31st, 2020, and I typed in what the department estimate was so you could compare to what is actual, what actually happened. And you, all this information came just from our adopted budget. It came from this department estimate column in the budget book. So this is exactly how we get our cash carryover. We take our beginning cash from the year before. We add the revenues that we think we're going to get in. We subtract the expenses that we think we're going to spend. And that is where we end up getting our cash carryover and how we estimate that. And that cash carryover drives two things. First of all, it drives how much money we can, we think we can spend in the next year. And it also ends up driving our ending fund balance, what we're projecting that it's going to be the next year. And our department estimate actually ends up kind of becoming our new budget because the department, we don't pay attention to the amended budget amounts when we're calculating what we think our next year's budget is going to be. And so we all know that right now, we've been quarantined and staying at home and trying to flatten the curve, and that it has had some impacts on the economy. And it's still early. We don't know what those impacts are yet to us. Our sales tax revenues, you can see, you know, about almost a quarter of our budget is our taxes, and a big chunk of that is sales tax. And so while it's very nice that we that we did that we did end the year with a higher fund balance and a higher reserve in the general fund than we had anticipated that we would start the year off with. And I think that will come in handy over the next few months. And what we are doing later tonight on the agenda, you guys have an ordinance to consider that all it does is it trues up the cash carryover amounts. So each fund is being tweaked to basically make that beginning cash carryover be what it actually is. And then we set aside money that has to be aside because there were items ordered or purchased or slated to be used for something that we've already committed to. So those dollars will not be available for us to use, and the balance goes into the rainy day fund. And that, those amounts in the rainy day fund will be there to help us if if sales taxes drop to an extent where we need to use some of that money to help us get through. And with that, I think I'm going to stop sharing my screen and find out if there's any questions. And I'm sorry, that was probably boring. It's hard for me to see your face. When I can't see your faces, I don't remember to stop rambling so much, so.
Questions? Anybody have a question or a comment? Councilman Van Winkle.
Yeah, I think I missed it there. I think it was there for a minute. What's our reserve at the end of the fiscal year?
Our reserve ended up being 28.24%.
And we have an estimate of what we thought it was going to be?
We estimated that it was going to be 20.57%. So that was 7.67% higher.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Trutzel.
Was there any particular division in the budget that seemed like there was less money spent than they had planned?
Yes, I I don't know. Okay, let me see if I can. I'm going to try to share my screen again because... Okay, so if I go here, the biggest difference was the police budget. The police budget anticipated, what we did is we, but we hoped that we would have all those positions filled by all the vacant positions filled at the end of the year, the last six months of the year. That didn't end up happening. So the police department had $367,684 of money that they didn't spend. There were also in capital outlay, $265,480 of capital items that we are going to be paying, carrying over to next year and paying for out of that money for next year. So those are our, like, make up 50%. The next biggest one is the legislative budget. Well, that's not the next biggest one. It looks like Public Works. We are carrying over some of that money for engineering. And then the jail also had $89,000 that we thought we were going to spend and didn't spend. And that's because we're budgeting for prisoners' maximum capacity. And when we don't have all those prisoners, our expenditures are going to be lower, but so will our revenues.
Thank you.
Sheila, can you unshare your screen so that the mayor can see all the images? There you go.
Sorry.
So, Councilwoman Stavie.
I have a question from about 15%, which is our need-to-be reserve. We get about $700,000 over there and roughly, I think, I think, just figuring in my head, about a million and two, probably. Any estimates on what our shortfall is going to be? Have you heard anything? I mean, obviously, you don't know, but what's it looking like for the next three months? Any estimates, anybody coming up with anything there to see what kind of shortfall we're going to see in tax revenue coming into the general fund?
I have heard estimates all over the board. At this point, it is, it is a complete dartboard guess. And, you know, I've heard when this started, people were thinking, you know, 60% for the year. But then after people started looking at their budget, and I'm talking, when I'm talking about people, I'm talking about the listserv from GFOA and that I've been watching. And then people started actually putting those numbers to their budget, and then they seemed to be getting more optimistic almost because they didn't want to have to slash their budgets that much. And so I don't think anyone knows. I think it's, it's an unknown. And I just caution everyone to remember that one month of sales tax isn't something to live or die by because of timing differences when we compare from a month from year to year. But once we get three or four months of sales tax revenues in that are going to be showing, you know, looking down or that they're looking okay, that's when I'm going to start getting excited, whether excited is happy or excited is worried. Right now, it's just really wait and see. I'm very happy with how our reserves ended up because it gives us some comfort. And I've run my own projections. And I think that those reserves are going to help us get through this fiscal year.
Sheila, well, thank you. I would agree. We'll just have to see where we're at, but we've had to throw a dart from time to time anyway. And we have to do it now in order to prepare for what it could be. And I realize that a million and two or thereabouts, which we can adjust other places if we have to. Just kind of get a feel for what it's going to take to carry us through this. There's no doubt in my mind, it's going to be harmful to some degree, so this will work out well. So anyway, you have thrown a dart from time to time about every year, really, and pretty close. So at least you're thinking about it. I like that. Thank you.
Councilman Van Winkle, you were next.
Yes, Sheila, the $265,000 that you've mentioned in capital items, would that be the patrol cars that have been ordered that we're waiting on delivery?
That is part of it. That's $170,000 of it. And then we also have money that we still owe for to execute time. And these are all, all the projects are actually laid out in detail in the ordinance, the carryover ordinance, and that's where I'm reading these from. Then there's some money for the city's website upgrade, also a communication center HVAC system, the patrol cars. Yeah.
That's fine. I guess my only question regarding figuring that in, because we know that money's spent. It just hasn't gone out in a check yet because we're waiting on cars to be delivered, which is a substantial part of that reserve or those excesses or the excess that we've got left over. Where does, once, we know that's going out, once that goes out, where does that really, where does that leave our reserve? And do we have an estimated reserve for the end of this next fiscal year coming up?
So our rainy day, the amount that we are over the 15%, the money that is $1,033,351 in the general fund after those expenditures.
That's after the 170-some thousand for the patrol cars goes out?
Yes.
Okay, and then...
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Van Winkle, it's not $1,033,351. It's... Oh, goodness. $735,825, sorry. I was looking at the wrong line.
All right, what figure is that then?
The increase, $735,825, is the amount that we will have in the rainy day above our 15% reserve.
Okay, and that includes the 170-some thousand that's carried over for the patrol cars or not?
The $170,000 carried over for the patrol cars is taken out of that number. So the amount that we actually really have to have in the general fund for the rainy day is $735,825. I think, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but the patrol cars, the money for the patrol cars is, I think you're confusing the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund with the general fund. And it's very hard to do because we have those patrol cars coming out of that Public Safety Sales Tax Fund as a transfer into the general fund to reimburse the general fund for those patrol cars because the general fund is the fund that is actually going to pay for the patrol cars. And I confused myself just saying that. So I can say it again. The general fund pays for the capital outlay of patrol cars. And so it's shown as an expense, the $170,000 is shown as an expense from the general fund. The Public Safety Sales Tax Fund then reimburses the general fund for that expense. And it is also shown as an expense from the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund because it's being transferred out of that fund into the general fund. The general fund shows a revenue of a transfer in from the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund. And so it's all accounted for, but if you don't understand the transfers, it can look like you're, like we're double counting it. But we're not because we have an offsetting revenue.
Okay, thank you for your complicated explanation.
I'm sorry.
But my question, and I understand what you're saying. We're paying for something out of one fund, but it's got to go into the general fund to pay the bill. And it's coming from over here, out of the Public Safety Sales Tax as described. But all I was concerned with was you were saying we had these, this excess, and you said of, you know, $367,000 and $265,000. And all I was asking was, you also gave us a approximate reserve where we're at, reserve percentage. And I wondered if that was going to then go down with the payment on the cars?
Yes, it will.
The way I, the way I describe it to our folks is it's like a savings account and a checking account. And you make a transfer from your savings account into the checking account so that you can write the check to pay for the item.
And I understand all that. I was just trying to make sure I understood where the reserve stood, the number she gave us, and how it was affected by this transfer and payment on the cars. That's all.
Sure.
Thank you.
Actually, I just took a quick peek at my notes. It will go down approximately 3% after we after we spend the, the fund balance would be reduced by about 3% by those capital items.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments?
Mayor, I don't know if you can see me. I can't see myself here, but can you hear me?
Where are you? Yeah, I hear you.
Can you see me?
Yes. No, no, I can hear you though.
I don't have a clue. I have a question for Sheila again. Can you hear me, Sheila?
I can.
All right. As I was following through, I want to make sure I get my head together here. We had in overrun roughly $1 million. We had in restricted due to needing things that didn't get purchased, $297,000 coming out of that. Was those, to start with, stop right there, was those police cars in that $297? Are they in the following year?
They are included in that $297.
Okay, so that leaves us approximately $700,000 balance. I mean, it's 730-something, 730-something thousand. And then you said we were going to be, in your last comments, you said $700,000 or $735,000 over and above the 15% of our minimum where we should be. And I'm not calculating that to be so in my mind, and I don't have a calculator here. But what I'm seeing is a 20.57 reserve, which is 5.57 over the 15 now, and then we're adding the $700,000. In addition to that, which should kick us on up there a while. And if that's not the case, I'm not seeing that reduction in that 3% to match up at all, so help me out.
Okay, that's a great question. So the fund balance reserve percentage is always based on revenues. And so... I want to show you. Here's, here is how I calculate. Here's, here's how I calculated, Councilman Savage, let me share my screen. Okay. So I don't know, can you see my screen, Councilman Savage?
I can.
Okay, so I have one percent. And all I did is I took that twenty-eight point two four percent. Um, and divided it to figure out. By this, uh, the three points, seven million. By the twenty-eight point two four percent, which told me that each one percent is a hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred four dollars.
Well, that's, that's about what it always has been, about a hundred thousand dollars.
And so, um, and so since I knew. That the twenty-eight point two four percent was going, that I was going to have a reduction of about three hundred thousand dollars. That's why I said it would be reduced by about three percent, down to twenty-five point two four. Instead of twen- instead of twenty-eight point two four, to Councilman Van Winkle's question, I thought if, if we had reduced and taken out. All those capital items, we would have been at about twenty-five point two four percent instead of at twenty-eight point two four percent approximately.
So that still puts us roughly, and again, in my head figuring, still roughly a million dollars over the fifteen percent. I think that's where the statement you made was not correct.
Oh, okay, yes, so what I was thinking about is where we were going to end fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And I, I knew that we were going to, we were estimating to be about fourteen point three percent. Um.
Okay.
In next years, and so I, I just said, well, we were, we were really, we were good when we adopted the budget. So all the money that's in rainy day is, is going to, um, be able to be used. This year if we need it.
As an offset to the lack of, of funds, so I, I say what it sounds like, and help me out here, because I'm not pointing a finger. You just kind of jumped forward a year when you made the comment of about fifteen percent, because that was what was throwing me off.
Yes, yes.
So we're about a million dollars over the fifteen percent based on hopefully the ride right on through this year.
Yes.
To twenty twenty-one, thank you.
Yes.
Other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, we're going to adjourn the work session at this time. And we're going to call the regular meeting of May twenty-six, two thousand twenty, and we're going to have the roll call, Andrea.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Lathrop. Councilmember Tretzel.
Here.
Councilmember Van Winkle.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Davidson.
Here.
Councilmember Pete.
Here.
You're muted, Mayor.
Consider agenda one motion, non-debatable to approve the recommendations noted. Any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion and separate action.
Present.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
You're muted, Councilman Clark.
I abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
Who's left?
I. I.
I and an I, okay.
Um, Councilmember Clark, what is your reason for abstaining?
My brother-in-law is Dave Daniels and being voted on by the park board.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so that motion passes. Personal appearances. We have none. Ordinances, A, a motion approving the final reading of bill number two thousand twenty, twenty-five.
An ordinance approving an agreement between the city of Belton, Missouri and the Missouri Department of Conservation and authorizing the execution of the same.
Present.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
That motion passes. B, a motion approving the first reading of bill number two thousand twenty, twenty-six.
An ordinance approving the reappropriation and revision of the city of Belton fiscal year twenty twenty-one adopted city budget.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Councilman Clark.
Sounds like we got about a million dollars more than, at the finish of twenty twenty? So it sounds like it's a pretty good budget to approve, right?
I don't think this is a budget.
Yeah.
Well, we're adding a million dollar carryover, it's what it is, right?
It, for the general fund, it's seven hundred thirty-five thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars.
Okay, it's still a good thing.
Somebody else, Councilman Finn, were you going to say something?
I'd just like to agree, sounds good.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That motion passes. Okay. C, a motion approving both readings of bill number two thousand twenty, twenty-seven.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute the ninth amendment to the tax increment financing redevelopment contract. Between the city of Belton, Missouri and group Belton LLC. For implementation of the Y Highway Marketplace Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan as amended.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Councilman Finn.
Yeah, I just wanted to get some clarity, I know, um, this is the ninth amendment that we've had on this TIF air on Y Highway. And was wondering, since the eighth, um, amendment, how many other businesses have, uh, gone in to this area directly that would benefit that?
Councilman Finn, thank you so much for your comments, this evening we've got Carolyn Yatzak, our Economic Development Director, that's here to give us an update.
So, good evening, Council and, um, and Mayor Davis. So we have had Belton go in and, um, Belton has gone in. And I believe that is the only one since the last, since the last amendment in, um. Two thousand eighteen, uh, we do have Kylie Stock who is with the Costantino family, this, this Y Highway Marketplace is. Um, the Costantino Shopping Center, and Kylie Stock is here as well as their attorney with Bolsonelli, which is Kurt Peterson. And they are here to provide an update, uh, for us and answer any questions that you may have regarding the marketing of that shopping center.
Are they going to give a presentation?
Kylie and Kurt, you guys can go ahead and unmute yourselves if you'd like and, and put your video on.
This is Kurt, can you hear me right now?
Yes, yes, we can.
That's great, I, I can't seem to make my video go, that won't be the end of the world for y'all, I don't think, um. Start my video, how about that, good evening, everyone, and I assume Kylie is on as well. We were last before you on this matter of, yeah, just, it was near the end of eighteen. And we described our efforts at the time, which we were excited that we did have a lead, which was Belton. As just noted, that did end up being a successful teneting of our inline space right next to the grocery store. We also described that because we felt like, although our efforts were diligent and continuous and all of these things. I mean, we want as much as anyone, certainly the city, we want that center full, that's good for our grocery business, and that's good for our investment in the property. But we felt like, and talking to Alexa and, and, um, EDC and others, that it was important that we change brokers. So you may recall that we were making a switch or anticipating making a switch from Area, uh, brokers to Jay Ferguson of Ferguson Properties. Uh, the first thing I wanted to note was you may see an Area sign out in front of the shopping center, that's because Area is still the broker of record, but that takes an explanation. Just after we got together with you all at the end of two thousand eighteen. Area actually, lo and behold, there, there was some market activity. And we felt that it was the right thing to do for the center, to let them try to finish that off of those relationships. Um, it ended up that, and I will not go into detail affirmatively, but if anybody has questions, we can dig into it. Uh, none of those ended up panning out, and just about the time we'd make the transition, then in early nineteen, after letting Area try to finish those leads. Um, we were approached by, uh, Mr. Dave Christie. Um, I know he's well-known at the city, ha- having done many, many things within Belton, and we, uh, he has a great reputation. Especially for getting retail users both in Belton and all over the place, and we were actually quite intrigued. Uh, by his offer to step in and buy the inline space next to the grocery store. As well as the, um, uh, a, a portion of the parking lot where a pad could go, and then the two existing pads that we've talked about before with you. The one on fifty-eight, um, and the other one just next to the grocery store, so on Y Highway. And so we entertained those discussions with Mr. Christie, uh, through the second half of two thousand nineteen. And it ended up leading to a signed purchase and sale agreement in January of this year. Now, uh, Area is still in place, as I mentioned, and anytime Area, uh, gets a lead. They are now directly communicating with Mr. Christie, because again, we believe that that transaction will go through, and Mr. Christie is intimately, as you can imagine. Um, interested in whatever area i- is able to, um, attract in the way of possible leads. So, but for, uh, the virus, we, this contract was anticipated to close with Mr. Christie in April of this year. But like every other contract that I have been a part of, uh, in my real estate profession, um, everything has been pushed out, as you can imagine. So right now, um, we gave an extension of due diligence, as they say, under the contract to the end of July of this year. Meanwhile, we, um, continue to think that and hope that that, uh, ultimately leads to a closing by Mr. Christie, as we think he is. As good as anybody, especially, uh, for, for this center to be able to draw, um, the tenants. In fact, he's, I, I don't know if, if any of you have had a chance to speak with him personally in recent months. But I know he has some specific users that he is thrilled about, that he believes when these clouds pass, he will be able to close and, and put in the center. So, uh, we just can't wait for that to happen, and again, it's only good for the city, and it's only good for our, our core business, which is the grocery store. We, meanwhile, just, this goes probably without saying, but this price shopper is a top performer. In the Costantino family portfolio, um, they invest greatly in this store, and they, it is, again, it's one of, one of their top stores. And we really do feel like, um, doing that is going to be what's best for the shopping center long term. I think that's why Mr. Christie is so attracted to it, because in any center of this particular type of size. Grocery, having a grocery anchor telling you what you probably know is by far, I don't care where we are in the country doing deals. Having a strong grocery anchor is, is ultimately the, the key to success. So tonight, what we're, we have before you is this ninth amendment to the TIF redevelopment agreement. It does request a two-year extension, which we anticipate, um, we have all, all reasons to believe that it will ultimately be Mr. Christie that ends up implementing under that timeline. But if for some reason, because anything can happen, if Mr. Christie did not proceed and close, we can assure you that, um. We will be moving on to our broker change at that point, it will make sense, um, in that instance, and we will continue to push this as, as, as hard as we can. As we have been and put all our resources into this and continue to meet with the city regularly to update them on our leads, um, and the like. So with that, we wish we weren't before you asking for an extension, but hopefully that gives you a little bit of flavor for the activity we have. Um, had here in terms of focusing on our shared goal one hundred percent, which is filling out this entire shopping center. Around this grocery store, so if you have questions for Kylie or me, we, we'd be happy to answer those.
Councilman Finn.
Mr. Peterson, I, I definitely am empathetic to the, the fact of what's happened in the commercial real estate industry in the last few months, you guys have probably been. Hit harder than anybody else, so totally understand that piece of it. Um, I think the move with Dave Christie is a good thing, uh, it sounds, uh, as if we'll know something by July, is that correct?
Due diligence is up, you're exactly right, in, uh, in July, and then closing would be soon after that, that's right.
Could we get a report from you as that proceeds, uh, in the near future, is that headed toward that, that area?
You said, I'm sorry, repeat the question.
Could, could you get us a, an update on that as we move toward that timeframe?
Absolutely, we should just agree on something and put it on the calendar and make sure that, however you like, official or through staff, absolutely.
And, and through staff is perfectly fine, but just keep a surprise of what's going on there. And then I had one other question too, you know, we're excited, obviously bringing in Belton, that's great. Um, does that generate tax revenue, um, and that may not be for you, Mr. Peterson, but, um, does that, does that generate tax revenue? Is that a hearing aid supplier?
I'm going to ask Kylie, because that's a nuance, that's medical equipment, Kylie, what, what's the answer on that?
No, it does not generate sales tax.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that, okay, thank you very much.
Councilman Clark.
Mayor, I don't know if this is for Kurt or for Carolyn or Alexa, one of them, but assume when Mr. Christie takes this project over, we need to redo this. Agreement with his name on it.
Actually, um, Sid Douglas is also on the Zoom tonight, and I think I would like to refer that question to Sid, please.
Okay.
The, uh, let's say, as part of the closing, there would be an assignment of the existing contract to Mr. Christie as it relates to. The portion of the center that he would be purchasing, we wouldn't be modifying the contract, he'd be assuming the obligations. And we, and getting the assignment of the rights under the existing contract.
Thank you, Sid.
Other questions, Councilwoman Pete.
So maybe I misunderstood, but is Christie buying everything? Or are there going to be any, any little lots left for Constantinos?
I'll, I'll take that if that's okay, under the contract, Mr. Christie would be buying the, um, inline. So the, let me state it the opposite way, then I'll state it the affirmative, the negative is he's not buying the grocery store. And he's not buying the bank, the Arvest Bank Building, which we don't own either, right, Arvest owns that, so those, that, that's the negative answer. The positive answer, which is everything else, is Mr. Christie would buy, would purchase what we call the inline retail, right next to the grocery store that has the small shop space. He would be buying the pad on Y Highway, and he'd be buying the pad on fifty-eight. And then there's also some, I call it dirt, but some area out between the two pads on Y Highway. And the, um, inline, if you kind of think of it as a sandwich, right, the in-between area, there's some room for an additional building, so that would be what he is buying.
Councilman Clark.
Kurt, I'm looking at the map, and I don't know if you presented to us or Carolyn gave us, but looks like there's a project area three. Is he taking that, or is that where the, um, drainage areas?
The.
Blue.
I was just going to say, yes, I, I provided the, the, the map for Y Highway Marketplace. So project area two is the, uh, inline stores, and then also what Kurt referred to as the patch of dirt. Project area three obviously is right next to Arvest, area five is, is located on fifty-eight highway.
Yeah, I don't think you mentioned anything about project three unless I missed that.
That's Arvest, right?
No, that's the Y Highway pad that is next to Arvest, okay. So, yes, yes, he's buying the Y Highway pad next to Arvest, as well as the pad on fifty-eight next to the Taco Bueno. And I, I had heard that he had the Taco Bueno piece under contract as well, but I don't know where he's at with that, we don't own that property.
That'd be nice, thank you.
No problem.
Questions? Other people? I'm looking around, anybody else? Seeing none, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that discussion.
I would ask. For our vote at this time.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
That motion passes. I'm looking for a.
Motion move, second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second for a second reading, discussion. Seeing none.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
That motion passes. Thank you, folks, very much. Appreciate it, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We still got to do a second reading, Mayor.
Okay, a motion for a second reading. Have we had that? Is that what we just did?
She got to read the second.
Okay, so now we have a motion approving the second reading of Bill number 202027.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute the ninth amendment to the tax increment financing redevelopment contract. Between the city of Belton, Missouri and group Belton LLC. For implementation of the Y Highway Marketplace Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan as amended.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Seeing none.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
That motion passes. Thank you all. And have a good evening. Moving on to resolutions. Do we have any resolutions, City Manager, tonight? Haven't none. City Council liaison, Councilwoman Davidson for the park.
The park will begin offering. Only outdoor water park passes, renewals only, starting May 27th through May 29th. That's Wednesday through Friday this week. From 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at High Blue. There is only one person per family that will be allowed in the facility. All patrons renewing a season pass must wear a mask. Beginning Monday, June 1st. They will open it up to new season passes and day passes. For Belton, Raymore and Peculiar residents only during this phase in Missouri Show Me Strong Recovery Plan. Season passes must be purchased at High Blue during normal hours of operation. While masks will not be required during next week at High Blue. They are encouraged and everyone will have a non-contact temperature checkpoint. Prior to entering the facility. Day passes are purchased at the outdoor water park. This will help keep us within the mandated capacity restrictions and better manage social distancing. These limitations could be lifted based on Governor Parsons Phase Two mandates, but we will post updates as they become available. Here's also what you can expect when you visit the outdoor water park. We will let you know as soon as limitations are lifted in accordance with Missouri Show Me Strong Recovery Plan. Staff and members will have non-contact temperature checks on arrival. Staff will be wearing masks. Patrons will be asked a series of health screening questions as a precaution to COVID-19 related symptoms. No loungers will be available, but patrons are welcome to bring their own chairs. They will be offering private cabana parties only in June. From 7:00 to 9:00 PM each day. The cost is $400 for Belton residents and $450 for non-residents. Just call 348-7400, extension zero, to book your party. And I think that covers the pool. We're just days away from opening the Belton Summer Camp 2020. Summer camp is scheduled to run June 1st through August 21st. More information and signups are available online at, at teamsideline.com/belton. And you can enroll in camp after it's, it's already started, so June 1st is not the cutoff. They're also excited about the upcoming activities and can't wait to see all of you in action. Here's the latest on our baseball and softball season. Practices begin this week with games starting the week of June 15th. Tiny tots tee ball, that season will be played as scheduled. Saturday sessions begin on Saturday, May 30th. Monday sessions to begin on Monday, June 1st. Please bring your own glove. And they also encourage all participants to use their own equipment, batting gloves, fielding glove, bat, batters helmets and catcher's equipment. As needed for each division. Belton Parks will have equipment if needed. They also recommend that players do not share equipment with other participants. And should you have any questions, you can contact Kevin at kevengie@beltonparks.org. This is also a reminder that the Hy-Vee Summer Fest is now two days and has been postponed to August 21st through the 22nd. In Memorial Park. We plan to welcome back the Jones and Company Carnival and will feature the Heat on Friday and TNT Bannon Fireworks on Saturday. Our Parks Department is also hiring. You can come join their team. High Blue is now hiring a weekend custodian for Saturdays and Sundays and a night custodian Sundays and Monday, Wednesdays. Extra hours as a sub are possible, experienced and detailed cleaning preferred. You can apply for that at beltonparks.org backslash jobs. That's all I have.
Thank you. That park's doing a great job. They've worked really hard, they've been very diligent, they're actually. Almost really being trend centers. If you look at our parks, they're very active right now, it's really exciting.
Everything is clean, painted, ready for people.
It looks great, and I try to walk all the different parks and my feet hurt, but it's great to see what they've got done out there. Okay, with the mayor's communication. I did see some disturbing news this morning where I saw Ozarks where people were completely unresponsible with their spacing. Partying right on top of each other. Hopefully, we don't see that in our city limits. You've got to be cognizant of staying safe, your spacing, you got to be smarter in that. And I said that I've got my face mask right there, they hardly let me go in City Hall without my mask on. And you got to know that it's important that we stay within the parameters. And the chief has done a great job, emergency manager chief person of keeping us on, on the line. We have to do it right, we can't take chances. Very critical. So with that commercial, I'll go on to, I did get to meet three new police officers. Chief Person, you on there? It was kind of exciting to see the new police officers. And you want to tell everybody who they are?
Oh, no, there's a, there's a lot of question, wish you'd told me that in advance.
They're pretty sharp.
No, Noi Sosa is one of the officers. And.
I'm proud of him, now he's.
Scotty Shafter is the other one.
He's one, yeah.
I didn't hear you, Dave. Scotty Shafter? Yes.
All statewide receiver from right back.
The last one actually has. Three names, Alan Michael Royal.
And he's.
We're trying to decide if he's Alan or Michael, usually we just call him Royal, so.
Well, we're glad to see that we've hired more policemen. That's really a good thing, and they're really outstanding gentlemen. I got to meet him and visit with him for a while, and they're pretty sharp. So we're proud of the fact that we hired, they're right out of the, what, chief? They just came out of the academy?
They just, they just graduated from the academy and began their, their field training this week. So we have a, a fourth that is just getting out of the academy. Chelsea Kendall, also a Belton graduate, and she has been assigned for the last month or so down at the Health Department and has been helping out there. She's currently going through situationals at the Blue River Police Academy.
Outstanding. Okay, City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to let everybody know that we do have some meetings coming up in June. We'll have an extra meeting, actually, due to the time constraints on some of the projects. So we've got a meeting, our regular meeting is scheduled for June 9th and then 16th and 23rd. We are hoping that the council will be able to reconvene in the council room at that first meeting in June. Unfortunately, because of our limited space that we have here and the amount of space, because the council's going to have to spread out as well. Department heads will have to spread out, so we'll be limited in our space. We will continue to live stream, but citizens won't be able to come to the council chambers just yet. We're trying to work out the technology so that we can make that happen sooner than later. And if that should change, we'll definitely announce that and let people know. But for now, we'll be live streaming our meetings, so people will still be able to see the actions of the city council. But they won't be able to access the city council room due to our need to social distance. On June 1st, city buildings will reopen to visitors. As everybody knows, staff has been on site all along. And, but we are now reopening our meetings and we will have some restrictions. And those items are coming out in a city message to the community. Serge's Word, our communications group is helping us with that, Melissa's been a wonderful help. And that was actually released this afternoon. And more information will be coming, we'll be posting it. But for a highlight, we will be doing strongly encouraging masks. They are not required, but we are asking people to please have them. Staff, because we have the ability to social distance within the building, staff will have masks for themselves. And they will also have gloves available if they get up and leave their safe location, they will be asked to wear their masks. There is limited space within the lobby of City Hall. And so the social distancing that's required, only up to three families can be in City Hall at one time. One at the utility counter, one at the receptionist desk, and then one in a holding pattern. Other than that, people will be asked to wait outside if there's a line that forms. And we're limiting it up to 10 people within the lobby area of City Hall. And that, that's, that could be pretty tight, but that's considering that's family, and so it's not up to 10 different people. That's three different individuals or up to 10 family members that go with those three individuals. So, and then we also. For employees, we'll be taking, non-touching the proximity thermometers, we'll be taking everybody's temperature daily. To ensure that, just making sure that everybody is doing their due diligence and, and knows their own health conditions as, as we're going along. So all, all the buildings will be reopening. City Hall in the annex will have regular eight to five hours, and then the police and fire stations, they will be open to the public again. And then, of course, so will our other buildings for Public Works, Water Services, Transportation. And those buildings have special hours because they work different hours. They work seven to 3:30. So that's kind of a highlight to that. We are trying to, we are desperately looking ahead to being able to have our meetings here and hopefully be able to have the public in very soon.
Say we're live streaming?
Yes, we will be live streaming, we will always live stream for the public until we can get them back in here. We're hoping to continue to be able to do that afterwards.
Thank you. Okay, anything else?
No, that's all, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, other business. Councilman Finn.
Yeah, I wanted to bring something to light and just kind of speak for a minute. It's, it's been a difficult season for, for, for everybody in this country, and I appreciate all the staff, everybody in the city still pushing forward, I really do. So it's been brought to my attention that's, that's, that I think is a need here. You know, we've got, we've got some seniors in high school graduating. It's had a rough go this last semester. I happen to have one that lives with me at my house. And, and so speaking on behalf of her and the other 300 and some seniors. They haven't had a prom this year. Their graduation is uncertain. The after grad is going to be virtual for them, so you can imagine how excited a teenager's going to be about a virtual party. And I appreciate that happening, and yet it's still, it's virtual. And so one of the ideas that was brought to light, and some of the other cities around us have already done this, is have a parade for our seniors throughout the, the city. And I, I would like to, to see this come to fruition. And, and at this point, just ask for some partnership and some help in doing so as, as there are some obstacles there to make happen. I know Chief has stepped in and is helping. But again, I'm going to need some further assistance to make this happen. As we do have some time restraints, as several of our young men and women will be leaving to, to start serving their country in the military. I would like to see those individuals be able to be a part of this. And we've actually started a poll to see what the interest level would even be to make sure our seniors are definitely wanting to do this. And we've had quite a few of them, almost 100 of them have responded that they're interested in participating in this parade, should we, or could we have this? So I wanted to throw that out there and make that known and see what help we could get to move this forward, to make this happen.
I, I can speak to that because I have had something to do with this. Last week, there was a, an email that went to the committee that looks at parade permits. Andrea had received an email from a lady wanting to put a parade together. At first, the thought, their thought was that. There would be no need for any type of parade permit. They said that all traffic laws would be maintained. And then as the discussion went a little further, it became that there would be possibility of. A Facebook event with over 200 cars lining up on school property. The route that was suggested or requested went pretty much all around Old Town, down Main Street. Up into Cherry Hill, around Cherry Hill and back to the park again. So it was a very, very long and elaborate route that was being requested. And they said that they would be going five miles an hour. So you can imagine 200 cars going five miles an hour over that, that length of time. That's going to require a permit, it's going to require police officers blocking. The police officers and our, our emergency management staff being involved so that we could block intersections, keep other vehicles from getting into the parade. We were talking about a Saturday morning in a, in a commercial district as well as residential district. So it was becoming rather involved, plus it was going to involve school property. For an area to organize and then to disband. So obviously, the school district was going to have to be involved. Originally, way back in March, April, Belton Cares had, had discussed that. And at that time, the need was going to be for there to be some organization that would accept the liability to underwrite that. Earlier, when some of these parades occurred, there was actually one of the elementary schools that their staff had a parade. And sure enough, someone had a wreck during that parade. So you can imagine now if we're talking about 200 cars with that number of young adults and the, the public being involved. And that length of time, your liability just keeps creeping up every time you add another factor in. So the school district said that in order for that to happen, that they would also want, Dr. Underwood was part of this discussion. They would want some individual or organization to underwrite the liability. That the school district was actually concentrating on having a graduation. Either at the stadium or at Silverstein. Used to be Silverstein, now it's Cable Dahmer, is that what it is now? The, the arena in Independence. And that that's where their efforts were going to be. And, and here would be the parameters for them to, to use the, the school property. This morning, very early, I had an email from the, the same lady wanting to do this. This morning, very early, I had an email from the, the same lady wanting to, to do this parade. And the, the question then was, okay, what if we changed the route and we began at the park and ran what has been a traditional route of from the park down Main Street and then eventually winding back to the school again? Well, now you're talking about 200 cars in the park. So I, I emailed her what the requirements for a parade permit would be. I told her that the parks would also need to be contacted to have their input. If you're now on a Saturday morning going to have 200 cars organizing within the park in order to have this. And once again, if you're going to terminate at the school or have any use of the school property, the school's going to have their, their requirement and they would need to be contacted. So we have had to, we have tried to, to share what the parameters would be, what the requirements would be. There is a requirement that there be a, a minimum of 15-day lead time in, in discussions. We would waive that as long as we could get that done fairly quickly now. But, you know, that, we still need to understand that there's a certain amount of liability and planning and organizing that would go into an event this large. We're not talking about a very small school district with a very small senior class and, and a very short parade. We're talking about a, a fairly long distance and a lot of people involved in this.
Councilman Clark, you were next.
I personally would like to see something done with the senior class. I mean, it, it's been, I had a son graduate last year and I couldn't imagine having a child that is going through something like this and not having prom graduation. Be nice for the city to rally around them. My issue gets into, I don't know why we need to have 200 cars or everybody be in individual cars. If there's a way of getting buses or something that, that we could cut it down to 15 or 20 and make it something reasonable to go through the city or even go down our, our main area. I think that would be something that we could, I would support definitely. I don't know, 200 cars in a parade is a pretty long parade, so I don't know if that would actually work. So I think you'd have to figure out a way to cut that down a little bit. I mean, if you had 50 cars, that's still a lot. I mean, I think most of our parades are probably in that 30 to 45 cars at the most. So, but yeah, if we could do something that was mass transit or something like that, I think that'd be a better idea.
There have been a, a few years where, when, when we had the Community Days Parade, a few years when it was an all-call for the Shriners. And there, there were up to a couple of hundred entries with Shriners. And the parade was a couple of hours long, just trying to get that many folks through a parade. So it, it would be 200 cars if, even if you figured a, a few seconds, you know, 30 seconds each. It's, it's still a lar, long time that we would be taking up a, a lot of time going through town, which, which we're not opposed to. We just need to make sure that we are staffed up and there's, there's time and there's a plan. And that there's, there's someone willing to underwrite that. Because sure enough, if, if there's an accident, if, God forbid, somebody is injured during this. We've had parades where someone's been injured, that they look for the deep pockets.
So Chief, so as I understand it, what we need to do here, if we're gonna make this thing happen, obviously, we've got some logistics to figure out. But we're gonna need to get with the Parks Department and get approval from them to make it happen. Should we go with the traditional route, which, which seems to make sense? It's a straight cut through and it's not looping around the city to create chaos with a parade. We need to get with Dr. Underwood or one of his staff heads to get approval to land on their property, to disperse like we do like at a homecoming parade. We usually land on a school property. And then I also need to find or figure out a way to get someone to underwrite this for a liability. I think the, the, the question here is what level of liability are we looking for? What is usually asked for in a liability waiver on something like this so that it's appropriate?
The liability, the liability would be for the school district. If it's ending up on, on district property and what, when, when we met with them and, and Dr. Underwood has, and I hate to talk for Dr. Underwood, he's not here. But what, what he told her was that in investigating this in some other districts, what, what they need is some, someone who will take responsibility for people, for property, and for vehicles.
Councilwoman Peak, you were cut off there.
Yeah, I, I'm all for a parade if, you know, the seniors, yeah, they've had a, it's been a bad year for them and they deserve whatever we can do to help them kind of celebrate their, their new, new change there. But for sure, we need to make sure that everything is, you know, as Chief Person says, we've got to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. So God like, God forbid anybody gets hurt, we just don't want to see that happen. I do have a question. If we go the traditional route down Main Street, we're gonna have a lot of parents and a lot of family members probably standing along there. Where do we, if this is something that happens within the next couple of weeks, not, not knowing what's going on, where is our, our social distancing going to be?
That is a problem with a parade and a large, and a large social gathering is that we would be, as a city, authorizing a large gathering, if you will. But we would, we would ask people to make sure that they maintain some level of social distancing as, as part of this parade.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Maybe this is a crazy idea, I don't know. But I've been a part of a lot of parades for Community Days over the last decade. It's not that fun. But what if, just hear me out. If we took like Memorial Park out there by the pool and if each senior basically had like a six-foot by six-foot spot on the grass along the parkway out there? And then people could actually drive through there to say bye instead of, so it's kind of like a reverse parade. You're kind of driving through to say bye to the seniors, but so they're all able to be spaced out. And the people attending the parade are actually in the vehicles and not potentially being exposed. I don't know, just something to think about.
When does the pool open?
Exactly.
Okay. I'll, I'll interject.
One thing that you might keep in mind, what, what has been, what, what's been said is that we would like our seniors to have the senior experience. Well, this hasn't been part of a senior experience before. But as we move forward, this may become the new senior experience. So whatever you're doing this year is going to set the precedence because next year's senior class is gonna want to have their parade. And the year after that, the senior class is what, gonna want to have their parade. This, this, we need to make sure that what we do is planned and organized and well-thought-out becomes, this will become the senior experience.
Councilman Finn.
I would be, I would entertain a parade every year for these seniors if there's a COVID-19 lockdown and they don't get to go to their own prom and they don't get to do these activities. I would absolutely agree to do that and we could set that precedent this year. Absolutely. I think that's great.
Let's hope we don't have a COVID every year, but it'll be up to the next guy to take care of it, so.
Oh, golly. Councilman Clark.
We do kind of have a parade done every year. And I mean, the seniors have had to graduate from Belton recently and they got to go back to their elementary schools and do a parade through the hallways. So they're in cap and gown. They're, they, this year is unique. And I understand what Chief is saying that, you know, next year, if parents are gonna want to do it, we can just tell them no. If they get a graduation, their kids get to go to the elementary schools and do their parade. I mean, these kids didn't get to do any of that. So, you know, if it's the same scenario that we're dealing with right now, again, in a year from now, then yeah, we can, we can let them have their parade. But I think if it's, if they get a prom and if they get graduation, they get to go to the elementary school and do a parade, then I don't think they need one. I think it's a unique thing.
All right, I'm gonna chime in. I haven't had a chance. So what I'm gonna say is, is I'm, I'm really on to this. I've, I've thought, Chief, that we were gonna try to have graduation with Dr. Over at the high school. That we were gonna try to have spacing and maybe at the, at the high school. Limit the number of people that can come. We've done that at Belton before. Give them like two tickets extra than the, the graduate or how many ever. And use both sides of the field. We could use the whole field. We could use, there's all kinds. Is there anything else been said with the school district about having the graduation at, at the Southwick Stadium?
The, my, my conversation with Dr. Underwood is that they are making preparation to have graduation at Southwick Stadium. If that does not occur in June, I believe it is, June, July, then they, they do have the arena in Independence still reserved so that they may be able to go there. The reason that they are, are not 100% about the arena is because they're not sure what the regulations will be in Jackson County at this point.
So.
But they are, he said they are committed and that the, the school district is committed to having a in-person graduation this summer. And I'm sure that they'll talk about it some more this week. I believe it's this week at the, a school board meeting.
Okay, on the part of the parade permit, Councilman Finn, you should probably get to the permit, the link to our code to Councilman Finn. How's that sound?
Mayor, yeah, I, I just heard from our city clerk, Andrea Cunningham. She is sending that permit information and the link to the code just for Councilman Finn's information so that he'll have that so we can continue to work through this and try to get this accomplished.
Other comments? Councilman Finn?
As the chief spoke to, if we can figure out the logistics and making this safe and workable, would the city entertain waiving the 15-day need to wait for the, the parade so that we can get these kids in this thing?
That is an administrative rule. It, it is part of the ordinance, but the city manager can issue the permit and, and she and I have already had that conversation.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Finn, we, because we understand what you're trying to accomplish and they'd be happy to.
Once again, no one is trying to put a kibosh on this at all. We're just trying to make sure that it's, it's planned, organized, and it's done in a safe manner.
Everybody know their role now, how we're gonna handle it? Councilman Finn, are you sated? You satisfied with how we're gonna do this?
Yeah, I believe I have some, 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 I have the, the notes I need to know. I have the people I need to contact at this point. I appreciate the email, Andrea. So we will, we'll move forward on this, starting tomorrow morning, if not sooner.
Amen. We'll get it going. Okay, so we do want to honor our seniors. So with that, any other new business? Looking around. Are you waving at me, Councilwoman Davidson?
Yes. So I saw there was an article in the Kansas City Star this past weekend about Kansas City, Missouri, City Council passed an ordinance allowing their restaurants to use a portion of their parking lots as open seating for the time being. And I thought that was a really creative response to what we're all experiencing right now. And I know that there are some smaller restaurants, particularly on Main Street, that, you know, might be able to benefit from something like that. I don't know exactly what our code says about that. But if that's something that we could look into, that would be great.
And we could, I've seen where a lot of times they shut off a section of Main Street and, and then park like on the road and you can walk over and then do it that way.
Yeah, let me get with Dave Clemmons and Brian Hunt in our Planning and Building Department. And we've, we've not received any information, but I too heard that and actually heard and talked with a couple of restaurant managers and of how they were going to accomplish that. And they're all pretty excited about it, so.
Yeah.
See what we can do.
Thank you.
Great idea. Anybody else? Councilman Tretzel.
I mentioned this earlier in previous year, that at least some of it has a lot of times where they eat out there in the sidewalk area. So I, you know, I think it's something that we should have pursued a long time ago, you know, to give some people some options to do things. Some people just like to sit outdoors, so you know, I have no problem with that at all.
Agreed. So we'll check into that.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
And Andrea, you might comment on this. I think the biggest drawback probably wouldn't be those that are serving food, but maybe alcohol. And it may, may require a certain relaxation of alcohol because if it's a, a designated patio, like what may be at Brew Bakers or at Buffalo Wild Wings, where, where it's, it's a designated area. It, there's no problem with serving the alcohol in there. But if, if we open up the parking lots and they're gonna serve alcohol, it may require a, a TUP or a relaxation of the liquor laws. But that would be the, the only issue, I believe. Would, would that be correct, Andrea?
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up because I was also thinking about that. It would depend on how their liquor license is set up and it probably does not include the parking lot in this case. But it's something we could certainly inquire with the local liquor agent and see how they're handling it in Kansas City. There are some other ways to handle it. So on the liquor side, I think that it might be possible. We just might have to be creative and also talk to the local agent.
I believe.
There have been some, there have been some years of, like for Cinco de Mayo, where restaurants will be able to set up designated tents like in the parking lot and be able to, to do that. So I, I don't believe it's, it would be an impossibility. We just need to make sure that the, the licenses will allow for that to happen. And, and I don't think it's gonna be a huge obstacle. The state has already relaxed particularly liquor laws and the, the delivery of, of liquor by the restaurants now anyway.
And Kansas City, didn't they, Stephanie, Councilwoman Davidson, didn't they, the council relax that, the liquor license?
I don't know if they, I don't recall if they did anything about liquor specifically, but they, I know that they waived the permit fee. I know that they waived the permit fee. And I was just gonna say that I personally have no problems drinking margaritas in a parking lot if that's what I need to do.
Wow. Council, oh, you were taking an I-vote? Okay, Councilman Clark.
I know Kansas City has shut down some streets like West, Westport and all that, so there's no traffic. I don't know, is that the only place they're allowing these to do that? Or is this like citywide or is it just specific areas?
Kansas City went to the state legislature a few years ago and had a specific law written that design- Power and light. And I believe Westport may also be one, but entertainment districts. And so that's, that's only within Kansas City. It does not include other municipalities. Like Belton, under the liquor laws right now, that we could not designate an entertainment district. We can have, you know, like a full-time entertainment district, the way they do in Kansas City. We can authorize special events that are sponsored by fraternal organizations, things like that. And that's the way we've been able to allow some of those events that we've had on Main Street before.
I don't have an issue of doing it. I just think, again, going back to what we talked about is just safety, especially in a parking lot. If it's sidewalk, it's be all right. But just so you know, parking lot of Longhorns or Jose Peppers, it could be a little dangerous out there.
But I, I think that if, if a business wanted to designate, you know, with, with barricades or rope or tape or something, a certain area and have socially distanced tables, that we would not have a problem in being able to work with them to, to have that license expanded that way. But once again, I'm talking for Andrea.
Yes, I would agree. There are some options that are already in place that with the proper parameters, we would be able to do that.
Rock and roll. So how should we continue for the action on this? Have them call you?
It might be best to start with Alexa and Dave and Brian and check on the restaurant portion and the parking lot with the, with the city ordinances on that.
True. And what's happened, I'm having a sidebar conversation with Patrick, our city attorney, who sent me the information for what Kansas City has passed in order to be able to do this. So we will have a conversation tomorrow. All of those individuals that Andrea just talked about, I've actually already arranged it with Dave a few minutes ago. So Dave and Brian Hunt are building official along with Patrick and Andrea. We will be meeting in the morning to discuss this.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Good stuff. Any others this evening, other business? Okay, seeing none. Motion to enter executive session to discuss matters pertaining to legal actions according to Missouri State Statute 610-0211 and to discuss matters pertaining to negotiated contracts according to Missouri State Statute 610-02112 and to discuss matters pertaining to the leasing, purchase or sale of real estate according to Missouri State Statute 610-0212. And the record be closed and the meeting adjourned from there.
So moved.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Seeing none.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you. We'll take a brief meet, a brief break.